Agenda item eight, which is presentation on the November 29th, 2012 Strategic Planning Workshop, Adoption of Strategic Plan and Other Matters Properly Related There To of Possible Action. Mr. Barton, are you going to do the introduction here?
Mr. Mayor, Randy Robison, previously our legislative consultant, now in the private sector, was kind enough to moderate our council workshop, Strategic Planning Workshop, at the end of November this year, and today is a follow-up to those, the decisions made by the council on that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robison?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your record, Randy Robison. I had the pleasure of being the facilitator for the workshop that issued here, and am pleased to be before you again to present the report. Now, I know each of you have read this a number of times, highlighted, underlined, reviewed, edited, and committed to memory most, if not all, of it, so we can just jump right in and talk about it. First of all, I want to take a second to help us remember literally about the retreat almost 90 days ago, what we talked about, what ideas we had, kind of what the feeling in the room was, both at the beginning and at the end. So if you don't mind, Mayor, maybe I'll just ask a couple of, for a couple of comments. Maybe let's start with you, Councilman Gibson. What's something that you remember about the retreat?
Well, I think a number of things that... There we go. Wrong button. The button on that I wanted to talk, but I couldn't talk, but I had another button. I think one of the things that kind of struck me was that there seemed to be a very strong desire from everybody, I think, involved, including the public, who was there for some input, and I think that we identified, at least to my concerns, the items that I felt were really important at this point and needed to be dealt with the next four or five years.
Right. Great, thank you. Councilman Robinson, what do you remember about the retreat?
Is that there? I think that, I echo Councilman Gibson's, I mean, we hit the three key elements that I think are critical to the whole process and what we're about, and that's be good government, do better business, and be a great community. And I think that Mr. Carrier's comments prove the latter, a great community. We had great involvement, great community input, volunteers again. Long drive is the same way, volunteers. It's a great community. Be good government, it just, that's a natural, and it's be open and honest that we try to pursue and continue. Not everybody agrees with everything, but we try to do the best we can do. And then finally, the do better business, and that's a particular interest of mine. I think that's critical. We identified some specific items, streamlining the business licensing process, which we've done through several council actions, and will continue to do as the items come up, support the success of the Mesquite Regional Business, who've worked very hard and has donated a lot of, invested a lot of time and energy, and others, including, well, other, just the list goes on, but those three items, I think we identified are critical, and we work towards those goals.
Great, thank you. Let me ask a little bit different question to Councilman Lemon. What have you, what have been your thoughts and your actions since the workshop?
Well, as you recall, I act as the appointment man in dealing with business as far as summit coming up and so forth that we need to put together. From that, I'm seeing a synergy that's coming about now, and I personally have been working on and some studying and reviewing various plans that have already been done in other states to bring business and city government closer together so that we can market Mesquite in a proper fashion, again with our new business organization as part of the whole catalyst, so basically the business end.
Great, thank you. So as we look at this report, those comments that you just shared, from my perspective, accurately captured some of the elements of that planning workshop. And my job as a facilitator after the workshop was to try to take all of the information that we talked about, all the notes that we took, all the discussions that we had, and boil it down into a document, a tool that you could use to help you continually make progress on the goals that you had set. So some of this, as you can see, there's a little bit of literary license there, trying to get some memorable phraseology, some phrases that were easy for you to remember that would trigger in your mind what we had talked about, what you had planned for at the workshop. I want to take a second to give huge thanks to your city clerk, who took all of the minutes or all of the words down that day and provided those to me in a way to help me remember a lot of the things that we talked about. And I know she specifically asked about two hours in the, hey, can we take a break? Because my arms, my hands were getting tired, probably hurt yours too, but she did an amazing job of capturing that discussion, and that helped immensely in drafting this report. So let me just talk about the report real quickly. I won't put you on the spot and ask if you've all had a chance to review it. I assume that you've at least, you may now have just have it up now on your computer. But is there anything in the report now that is not, as you recall it, or not phrased as you would like it to be phrased, thinking back about the workshop, the goals that we talked about, the plans that you outlined? Is there anything that you would like to discuss specifically?
I would say that in one particular section, attracting sustainable business, although it is clearly the council's desire, I mean, that was a very clearly stated goal, I think one of the key steps is the Mesquite Regional Business, and because the reality, I think, if my recollection is clear about the meeting that we had, is that there's theoretically little, little that Mesquite or the council can do individually for the city as a whole to attract business, other than invite business, make the process as simple as possible, don't throw up roadblocks, eliminate roadblocks. And so I think that perhaps attracting sustainable business is an interesting mantra, but I don't think that there was a clear, I'm not sure what the methodology is or will be for that, so, and I caution against setting goals that are unattainable. So I guess that's my input.
Is there some verbiage in there that you prefer not to have in there, or something that you'd like to add or change about that particular section?
Personally, it's not the definition of sustainable business, or nor the notion of trying to attract it. I think that, I think there's just should be some caution or something that makes it clear that if there is, unless somebody can explain what it is, we've been through this for 10 councils I've been in this town, or whatever, election cycles, and everybody says it, but it's functionally very difficult for a city to do. It's not, you know, people, the city does not recruit business. The environment recruits business, in my mind, and I think as long as we're creating the environment, businesses will come, and I think we did a good job in the MRB in establishing that and having them out physically looking. But I guess it's just, I just caution against, Mayor and council want to focus on attracting, yeah, we want to focus, but from a practical standpoint, I'm still not clear how that's done, other than what we've done so far, dropping the roadblock.
And I was just saying, the phrase that you used, creating the environment, the reason that it was captured in this section is because, as I recall the conversation that day, that's what we talked about within each of those action items in that particular category. It was about, remember, we asked the question, what is it that the city can do, as opposed to, you know, actual businesses, or site locators, or the MRB, or whoever it is, what is the city can do? And we talked a lot about creating that environment. So we talked about at the business summit and seeing what we do and the business mentoring ideas. So the attracting perhaps is not quite adequate enough to capture that idea. So a couple of things we could do. We could either make a note in the public record that's going on right now to reference back to it. I'd be happy to go back and either add a footnote, or add a paragraph, or something that better captures that idea, which would be most preferable.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't have any issue with that verbiage phraseology. I think it would continue to have a business welcoming or environment, friendly environment to help attract sustainable and other businesses.
Okay. Any other comments about anything specifically in the report? So let's go to page nine.
Councilman Robinson, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, the action section, what we can do, I thought was critical, we really do look at that and start working toward, at least some of the things we talked about. One, I would like to see some action on the running for our future.
One moment, please, Councilman. Yes, he is. Your mic is on.
Added in my ear and stood in my mouth. One of the things I'd like to see is try to get done in the near future is the policy use of city land, and I think it's one of the things in particularly talking with some of the people that are interested in working, or working with us on economic development, is that we would be light years ahead if we got out of the land and let the realtor sell the land for us and bring the people to us instead of us having to stuff the city on the shelf, not producing anything for the city.
Right.
And ultimately, it works out to be the same for us, one way or the other, because we still sell the land that we own, they make the commission, and we'll have some new businesses there.
Thank you. Let me use that comment to talk about the accountability side of this report, this tool. On page 10, under do better business, it's the second action listed, is the city-owned land sale goal that Councilman Gibson talked about. You'll notice the way it's phrased is in Q2, meaning quarter, second quarter of the year 2013, staff will, et cetera, et cetera. So instead of just saying to ourselves, hey, at some point, or this is something we'd really like to do, or man, we really ought to get around to that, when we put this together in consultation, both there at the workshop and before the workshop with your city manager, we talked about setting actionable goals. Part of an actionable goal is putting in a specific timeline. So you'll notice several of the actions that we decided upon have that kind of phraseology in Q2 2013 or Q3, that gives you a target to shoot for to accomplish that goal, rather than just kind of a wish out there that something happens. And that's part of that accountability that we wanted to build into this entire process to help you keep moving forward and achieving these goals that you set out for yourself. So the summary of goals and actions starts on page nine and goes over to page 10. Again, each of these sections has an explanatory sentence at the beginning to kind of give you a context of what it is we meant when we said be good government, or do better business, or build great community. Again, that was gleaned from the discussion that we had, the notes, the excellent notes that were taken, and hopefully is a reflection of what you all have in mind as you look at accomplishing these goals. So is there anything in the action items that anyone has a comment on? Either it's not quite what you had in mind, or hey, maybe this word is better than that word? Anything that you would change amongst actions? I'll take silence as a no. Great. So then let me turn to page 11. This is the accountability and reporting section. In my mind, this is the most important section of the report. This is the most important thing that you will do from this point forward. We talked about this at the workshop. Now that we've set some goals, some actionable plans, how are we going to keep ourselves on task? How are we going to keep ourselves moving forward? As we discussed that, I believe it was actually Councilman Hefen that came up with the idea, and we've got kind of three areas. Once a month at a designated council meeting, let's have a brief update on one of those areas, so that we continuously cycle through those to check up on ourselves and see how we're doing. So that's the way the accountability mechanism has been set up. Once a month, your city manager will give you a brief update at a council meeting on one of those areas, and then in the six-month interval, he'll give you sort of an overall progress report on all of the areas, and do the same thing again at the year mark. Pardon me. That's an opportunity, each month, that's an opportunity for you to say, hey, we're making good progress, but maybe we should do this, or that really doesn't seem as relevant anymore, maybe we need to change it so as has this kind of a focus. That gives you the opportunity to say, hey, what's going on right now in our city council world, in our city, in our community? Does this still fit, or do we need to modify it a little bit? Remember, these goals and actions that you outlined weren't something separate and apart from what you are doing now, from the strategic plan that you already have in place. It wasn't something else that you're supposed to do. It wasn't something outside of the work that you do each council meeting. It was, the idea was, of all the things that we are doing and have to get done, what are some of the things that we want to focus on specifically? And again, that key word, actionable items, over the next 12 to 18 months. So it's, in my mind, it's more of a subset of the work that you're doing that brings a little greater focus and clarity to a subset of actions that you want to accomplish. Does that make sense? Any comment on the accountability measure? Is it enough? Will it keep you on task? Is there anything that you want to add?
I think one of the things with this focus is that not only do we track ourselves, but we also let the community understand this was just not a get-together, the shelf, this thing, but there's some detailed things that we want to focus on. I think that they need to be aware that we are concentrating on those, and they have ideas. I mean, this offer of weekend was a tremendous success, and I think the community deserves a lot of credit for that, where we can help, we need help, but they can help us stay on task with some of these things, because there's great suggestions out there, and I think that's, that was part of the understanding with the monthly reports, with the six-month update, so that things like the cemetery, those things that are really of interest, we can continue to involve the community on issues.
Councilman with help.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Robison, I was just reading the accountability reporting, and although we do have short, medium, and long-term goals, I was just wondering if the six-month, if the six-month report, you think that might be excessively long, but it'd be possible, or you think I might be able to do it, you know? First of all, we'll do it a monthly thing, and maybe 90 days versus six months, and every 90 days versus a six-month span? That seems to be kind of an enormous amount of time to really check even medium or long-term goals. Just a question.
Yeah. No, I think that's a good thought, and we, if I recall correctly, we discussed that kind of a timeline at the workshop, I believe. But, so, let me respond this way. This is your report. If that makes more sense to you, if you think that will better serve you, then I guess without overstating my bounds with the city manager, if that makes, if that's a better method for you, I would suggest I should do it that way.
I would, I personally would like to see kind of ongoing progress versus waiting six months, and maybe that's just me.
Any comment, Mr. Barton?
That doesn't present a problem. We can certainly do a more thorough report every 90 days rather than having to wait 180 days before you get a detailed report, so that's not problematic at all. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Great. Councilman Robinson, did you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to ask Mr. Barton if that was, if that would pose a particular problem. I mean, I don't have any issue with it. You're getting each of those three components once every quarter. Six months would be a summary, so I'm relatively indifferent, as long as it didn't, I don't want staff spinning wheels on things that are relevant.
Sure. That won't be problematic at all.
Great. So let me move to page 12, which is the recommendations moving forward. And this section is just about, hey, we had this experience, looking back, what did we think of it? How did it go? What would we change going forward? And these are my thoughts as your facilitator. And you see item eight there is first and foremost, follow the accountability structure. That'll be the difference of whether you make progress or don't on these actions. And then I suggest that you think about, this is an annual activity, and maybe because this is certainly designed as a 12 to 18-month look, maybe it doesn't necessarily become annual, but I guess the idea is make it regular. One of the issues that, I guess it's just kind of human nature, but also the nature of the business world, is oftentimes planning, particularly strategic planning, is something opposite, we look at it as something else that we do, like we've got to do this report, I've got to make that phone call, I've got to go to that meeting, I've got to do this plan, I've got to make a sandwich, I've got to fill up the car with gas. And so it's just, it's something, a box that we check, rather than a framework that guides the work that we do, either each day as professional staff, or even each day as a city councilman. And so having it in your mind that this is something that we do on a regular basis to help plan the work that we do, I think is important. You'll remember, we used some of these at the retreat. I'm not going to throw them at you again. I think I ended up in Councilman Gibson's room, I don't think I had, so that was a very good idea. But the, remember, the idea was is every week, every day, you have all kinds of issues coming at you. There are things that you have to do, there are things that you need to do, there are things that you must do, and then there's even some things that you want to do. But no matter what, just the fact that you're a council, and this is a city and a community, you'll have issues coming your way. I mean, look at your agendas every other week. They have stuff that just constantly comes up. So you can, you can spend a lot of time, in fact, you can spend all of your time dealing with the issues as they come, or you can step back and try to put a framework around the work that you do as a councilman, your role as a city council, and then address those issues within that context. That's what we tried to do with the workshop, again, is take a subset of your work and focus in on and set those actionable goals. So if you think about this in terms of an annual or at least a regular process, that will help you continually progress, not only with these goals, but the other goals that you'll set in the future. The other thing that we tried to make clear at the workshop is, again, this isn't, this wasn't our 10-year strategic, long-term visiting process. This was a subset of the work that you're currently doing now. You ought to think about when it's appropriate to revisit that long-term strategic plan. This wasn't it, but you ought to maybe set a date out in the future when you want to do that. Now, specific to this workshop, we had a couple of pre-meetings with staff and with the mayor, talking about how we wanted to, the workshop to run, what we wanted to accomplish, how we wanted to do it. And we asked, or I asked for, give me 30 days before the workshop so that I can do a lot of the pre-work, and I contacted each of you, either by phone or by email, had follow-up conversations with you, so that we got a lot of the work done, so that the few hours that we spent was maximized. Because as you know, you can only sit for so long, you can only absorb so much information. So we got a lot of the discussion prior to the workshop that helped us really zero in on focus. The holidays, this happened just after the weekend of Thanksgiving, and so it was about six, five weeks out from Christmas. And so that created some challenges with getting everything done, getting all the communication. We got a lot of it, very valuable. I could have used, quite frankly, a little bit more time with each of you, but time just wasn't available. And then after the workshop, of course, we're right in the holidays, and so getting the report finalized, any comments back, and getting it to you. From my perspective, the timeline was a little bit lengthy. I would prefer to get this wrapped up within 30 days after the workshop, so it's fresh in your minds, you're ready to go, and, you know, I thought the first year was a good timeline. That didn't happen, obviously, could have. But, so as you're thinking about it in the future, you may want to think about the time of the year that you plan for this. Maybe it's in conjunction with your budget timelines, and some of these issues have budget considerations. But again, think about it in terms of a regular activity, and then think about it in terms of what do we need to do beforehand and after, and that timeline to make it as useful as possible. And Councilman Robinson?
I agree that there needs to be a date certain effect, but I also have a suggestion that perhaps a rolling 15-month or a rolling 18-month would be more effective, and we begin, because we haven't finished a year by the time we have the next one. I mean, we've not even completed nine months, frankly, from the point we adopt this, if we adopt it. So if you have a rolling 15 months, that gives you the time to schedule it in advance to prepare it, to get the report, to report on the report, and accept the report, and then have your next meeting, rather than having our next meeting before we had nine months' worth of time to do something with respect to the report itself. So I think that's a great idea. Rolling 15 months is fine with me, and it makes sense.
Yeah, that's a good comment, because again, it's not just something that we do to do to check out the box and get rolling, it's a way to help us maximize the limited time that you will have to do to do your jobs. And so whatever the timeline is that makes sense, you know, 15 to 18 months, you know, again, we don't have a workshop just to have a workshop, it's really to get something done, so. With that, if there's no other comments about, oh, I was, I guess the last item there is again, follow the accountability reporting structure, because that's what will make the difference in anything stuff. But if there's no other comments, I'll just kind of wrap up. By way of reminder, towards the end of the workshop, we talked about, hey, we've had some good discussion, we've set some good action plans, but if we walk away and this is it, it hasn't really meant much. It won't be what we've said here, will be the things that we actually do and get done over the course of the next couple of 18 months that determine whether or not this is then not only a successful activity, but a useful activity in terms of helping you accomplish the work. So we talked about a couple of things. You might remember we played the Simon Says game. Again, people pay more attention to what you do than what you say. And then we talked about, told a story about my son playing baseball. You can't hit the ball if you don't swing the bat. Well, as fate would have it, I guess, baseball season just started again a couple of weeks ago. My son had to go through tryouts this year over two weekends. So the first weekend shows up, and what they do is, is you take a few fly balls in the outfield, then you move to shortstop, and they do a few grounders, then you move to first base to see, you know, how you go over there, and then of course you step on his plate and hit, you get five pitches. Not strikes, not balls, just five pitches. So first weekend, we go, he does okay in the outfield, he does okay shortstop, does okay at first base, gets up to the plate, doesn't swing the bat once. Not once. Now, some of the balls, they were off the pitching machine, and so some of them weren't actually strikes, they were a little outside, and he gets a little sensitive about that. But he came back over to the dugout, and, you know, he was just disappointed as he can be, and he has a tendency, like his dad, to be a little emotional, so he started, you know, teared up a little bit, and I said, hey, you know? And I told him, I said, you can't hit the ball if you don't swing the bat. Remember, we talked about that. Now, shame on me for not working with him in the offseason, but he got it. So the next week, we come back, do the same thing. Does okay in the outfield, does okay shortstop, does okay at first base, gets up to the plate, first pitch, swings the bat, hits the ball. A little drill to back to the pitchers now, but he hit the ball. Second pitch, swings the bat, hits the ball, this time he gets to second base. Third pitch, swings the bat and hits a nice solid line drive out in the centerfield. Now, the two pitches doesn't matter, right? He's on cloud nine, he's ready to go. But he came over, and this is what he said to me. Dad, I swung the bat. And I said, and guess what happened? And he said, I hit the ball. And he said, I hit the ball. I said, that's the way it works, right? And the same thing here with these goals. Now, we talked about, you've got this tool now in front of you that talks about those goals, those balls that you have to hit. The question now is, will you swing the bat? Because you cannot hit the ball if you do not swing the bat. Now, last time, I left you each with a little memory trigger, a baseball that I hope that you put in your office to remember. The other truth about baseball is that you can't hit the ball if you don't have a bat. So I'd like to present each of you with a bat that you can put next to the ball in your office. Mr. Mayor, if I could infringe upon your decorum a little bit?
If Chief Cantor could come up with those before, during the meeting, I'd be a veteran of the year.
Go ahead.
Just kidding, just put them over there somewhere, it'll be good.
Yep. With that, unless there are any other comments or questions, that does it for me. Again, thank you for the incredible pleasure it was, and privilege it was for me to do this workshop and this follow-up report at the time of my life, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robson. Mr. Hefen?
Question. Randy mentioned that they see, they watch what you do. I would like you to demonstrate how to swing that bat, so we hit it right. And we do appreciate the discussion and the retreat. I think there were a lot of good things that were talked about, and I think we do need to keep our eye focused on those objectives, and I hope that with the community's help, we can achieve those goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hefen. Councilman Robson?
If there are no further questions, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay, as long as we, are there any further comments? I don't see any. Please make sure to include that this will be a 15-month rolling, 90-day reports, and to include some verbiage on the sustainability of business that you brought up.
Do you like to make the motion?
No, I'm not allowed to do that, I'm just reminding.
I will move to adopt a strategic plan with the addition to the plan as mentioned by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. Motion carries.